February 2nd, 2015 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Perucca will lead the invocation this evening.
Let's pray. Almighty God, our Father, we acknowledge and confess to you that we have sinned against you in thought and in word and in our deeds. We have not loved you with all of our heart, soul, mind, and strength as you told us to do. We have not loved our neighbor as ourselves, as you told us to do. We ask you to deepen within us our conviction for the wrong we've done and the good that we have left undone. We know you're full of compassion, we know you're gracious and slow to anger, and you're merciful and forgiving. We ask you to restore to us the joy of your salvation and bind up that which is broken, give light to our minds as we deliberate this evening, strength to our wills, and rest to our souls. In Jesus' precious name, amen.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're joined tonight by some scouts from Troop 422 in the Annapolis area, and they're here to lead us in the pledge. So, young man, if you'd come forward and take your place right there, and the council and the rest of the gallery here will be pleased to join you in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject not on the printed agenda? Please come on down. I just ask that you state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to two minutes.
My name is Michael Virtue.
Is your, sorry, sir, I apologize. Is your microphone on? There we go. There's a gray button, sort of, there you go, it should turn red. There you go, perfect.
My name is Michael Virtue, and I reside at 8107 Hog Neck Road in Pasadena, Maryland, 21122, District 3. Counsel, Mr. Fink, bear with me, I'm not used to public speaking. I'm here tonight to voice my concerns about a new methadone clinic planned to open next month on Hog Neck Road. At issue here is the location and safety of our children. We are a community of families with children whose safety should be of some concern. We are homeowners who have struggled for years to regain values in our homes since the crash. We, as a community, should have some say in a decision to gather all heroin addicts together in one place. We have started a petition to stop the placement of these clinics where children wait for school buses and homeowners have to be worried. I am asking the council to take action and sponsor a bill that will protect your constituents from drugs and clinics that give out more drugs to cure drug addiction. Placing a methadone clinic, no matter how you sugarcoat it, as doing good in a community is asking for trouble. This clinic is going forward without any notification to the community whatsoever. It's just, it's been classified as an educational facility for which it's not, and I guess is supported by the federal government. I'm asking my community government, my county government, to step in and fight my federal government, to put some regulation on this so it doesn't go there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. The problem that you're having is the same problem that I'm also having in my district. We'll do the best we can, but the best thing that I could suggest for you is to contact your congressperson and senator, and you need to send them some very strong letters because the issue is, when it has to do with health, the county is very, very limited on what we can do because I have these methadone clinics, I got one over there, you know, across from Empire Towers, the people went ballistic. And it's just, because it's health.
This is the same man who opened the one across.
Yeah, there you go. He's got a niche and he's gonna keep on going. So your congresspeople are gonna have to be the ones that are gonna really do that. And I've been telling everybody, it's calling me, gotta call the congresspeople of our area.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. In honor of Groundhog Day, I thought we'd need to do it again. So I brought my little props tonight. You all know that a roll of toilet paper is a model of a septic, or a dry well, and that the hole is not the business end of the roll of toilet paper. It is the paper that is, that absorbs the waste and removes it. Well, as you know, my neighbor's using my land to absorb the waste, and I don't like this. And the county has a duty to revoke his permit because it violated the law and violates my property rights. You've also heard me plead with you, you know, to protect my constitutional rights to equal protection under the law, and that since the mission of the police department is to protect and serve the public, I'm just as much a member of the public as anybody else, I think, at least last I checked. And so when my neighbors park their cars on my land, I do hope that we will now resume the process of giving them tickets for violating both the statutory, excuse me, the mandatory tickets, the ones that, you know, the officer shall issue citations. And then when this goes on repeatedly, then when discretion comes into play and the officer may issue citations, they will begin to do that, too. I didn't have a cute Mustang convertible to remind you that my neighbors took credit for slashing the roof of my Mustang and the tires and smashing the windows. And I didn't have a cute little pickup truck to show, to remind you that they took credit for totaling my truck, and they threatened to do the same things to any other vehicle that I parked on my land, which is my right as a property owner, whether it's real property like cars and trucks, or whether it's the use of my land. I was gonna bring in, you know, some, you know, I was gonna talk about how much money I've lost because I can't rent my property, but much of you have rental properties and, thank you. You know that if you got $1,000 a month rent, in a year, that's $12,000, in 10 years, that's $120,000. You can do a lot with that much money, and I've been deprived of the opportunity to do that out of fear and intimidation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Also have Don Patterson sign up to speak as well? And then Michael Virtue, is that, is that you who spoke? Okay.
Yes, and happy Groundhog Day while he's setting up.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson?
My name is Don Patterson, who live in Arnold, 502 McMillan Court. Good evening. Last month, a county council member generated headlines for making what I thought were inappropriate comments about people and families earning around $50,000 per year. This seemed to me to be a debate about differences. In this case, the idea that people who earn only $50,000 per year are different from the rest of us who live in Severna Park or Glen Burnie. But are they really different? When faced with differences, some folks become fearful, in this case, afraid of losing some economic advantage they feel they have. This often leads to name-calling, in this case, again, calling people freeloaders, saying something, anything, really, to separate oneself from them, from others. But are these folks earning $50,000 a year really different from us? Sandy Stevenson, in her letter to the editor in the Capitol, January 15th, said it very well, quote, "The people he disdains are the teachers who educate our children, the nurses and technicians who staff our healthcare services, the police and firefighters who keep us safe, and the waitstaff and retail clerks who happily greet the millions of visitors and tourists to Annapolis and to the county," end quote. Aren't these the very people we would want to live next door to us? People who value hard work, who work day after day to protect and serve our families and community? I ask that when each of us is next presented with a situation involving differences, and I heard somewhere already this evening, that we fight the initial urge to badmouth others and instead focus on the values that we share with, with them, and explore collaborative, win-win solutions in a respectful manner. I ask that as county leaders, you individually and as a group, make a commitment to always act respectfully. I would offer an example of county leadership in this regard. Anarundel County's new police chief, Tim Altomar. Although it is very early in his tenure, I sense that he is sincere and committed to building positive relationships with all the individuals and communities in the county based on mutual respect and appreciation of the inherent worth and dignity that we each possess.
Can you please summarize them?
Yes. And I hope that that mindset could become a reality for all of county government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Is there any item many council members would like to place on the agenda? Seeing none may have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Some movement, Mr. President.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of January 20th, 2015.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Jerry Walker at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Pruski, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 20th, 2015?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of January 20th, 2015 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill 915, an ordinance concerning, an emergency ordinance concerning floodplain management, erosion, and sediment control, and stormwater management, floodplain management. Bill 1015, an ordinance concerning Gibson Island Special Community Benefit District. Bill 1115, an ordinance concerning Gibson Island Special Community Benefit District. Approval of loan and assignment agreement.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution 815, resolution expressing support for the county executive's recognition of the public health emergency presented by the use of heroin in Anarundel County. Resolution 915, resolution confirming the appointment of four public members of the Personnel Board of Anarundel County.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on resolution number 815 out of order?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Perucca?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on resolution 815 out of order is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution 815.
Resolution expressing the support for the county executive's recognition of the public health emergency presented by the use of heroin in Anarundel County.
Thank you. Mr. County Executive? Dr. Chan?
Chief Altomar?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you all coming down this evening. It is an unusual but welcomed guest appearance that the county executive makes in front of the council, so we're glad to have you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Vice Chairman.
And members of the council. I really appreciate the opportunity to be heard this evening on this important issue, and I thank each and every one of you for your sponsorship of this resolution. I come before the council tonight to address a growing problem that is facing our country, our state, and, and our county. Our county is experiencing a crisis in the form of heroin addiction. In 2014, there were 308 overdoses associated with heroin and other opiates in our county, and shockingly, 48 of those were fatal. Heroin fatalities in Anarundel County exceed those of Montgomery County and Prince George's County, which, as you know, are far larger jurisdictions. A recent Health Department report found that our county has the second fastest rate of growth of drug and alcohol deaths in the state of Maryland. And this year, we are experiencing roughly a fatality a week because of these pernicious drugs. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention calls the prescription opioid epidemic the worst of its kind in U.S. history. In a, in a study released this past fall, which examined 28 states, the CDC found that heroin deaths doubled between 2010 and 2012, and the CDC went on to report that in 2013, heroin-related overdose deaths jumped another 39%, surging to 8,257 people. That is more than the entire undergraduate population of Johns Hopkins University. This is a crisis that has to be addressed immediately with determination and resolved. In response to it, the administration formed a heroin task force in early December. That task force draws on every relevant department and office of county government, and it has to. I've described heroin as, as the octopus from hell, whose tentacles reach into every aspect of human life. Included in the task force are State's Attorney Wes Adams, Police Chief Tim Altimari, Annapolis City Manager Tom Andrews, Anarundel County Public Schools Superintendent George Arlato, Sheriff Ron Bateman, the Director of Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families Pamela Brown, our Health Officer Janine Chan, Fire Chief Alan Graves, Judge Paul Hackner, Detentions Superintendent Terry Kokolos, Anarundel Community College President Don Lindsay, Anarundel County Courts Judge McKenna, Anarundel County Mental Health Agency Adrian Mickler, the Mayor of Annapolis Mike Panalitis, also from Anarundel Community College Dave Presley, Annapolis City Police Chief Michael Prestup, and our Social Services Officer Carnetra White. The task force was initially charged with reviewing all existing programs that we have to combat heroin, and I'm pleased to report that we're, we're doing a lot, but we need to do more. The next step for the task force is going to be to develop a series of recommendations pertaining to expansions of existing programs and developing new programs that will be implemented in the coming months and years to tackle this problem from every angle, through education, through expanded treatment options, and through stepped-up enforcement. The final action plan from the task force will be released in the coming weeks, and will serve as a blueprint for how our county will turn the tide against heroin over the next decade. While I have not yet seen the final report, there are some things that I can share with you that I expect to be included in the report. They will include expanded use of Narcan, expanded treatment options in mid and south county, increasing and redirecting public safety personnel to the heroin fight, and expanding the use of diversion from jail to rehabilitation through more use of our drug courts. I'm pleased to report that due to the urgent nature of this crisis, we've already begun work on implementing some of the law enforcement and health-related recommendations. The police department has added an additional prescription drug diversion fraud detective to step up investigative efforts on the gateway drug to heroin addiction. The police department is also incentivizing proactive heroin arrests by patrol officers. Our mobile crisis clinicians will contact all arrestees with heroin-related offenses within 72 hours of the offense to introduce them to treatment options. And our mobile crisis clinicians will also be working with the Health Department and the Mental Health Agency to more effectively bridge the funding gap for quick placement into programs post-arrest. Tonight, I ask the council to stand with me in recognizing the seriousness of this public health crisis by passing a resolution declaring a heroin public health emergency. We are making this request to, to galvanize public opinion, to prioritize the activities within all of our county departments, to make heroin eradication our top priority, and to position us for possible federal and state aid to combat the crisis. While this is a problem that will not be solved overnight, by addressing it from every angle, attacking its root causes, it's a battle we can win. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Chan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schu, and members of the county council, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about this very important public health issue. I think Mr. Schu has done a remarkable job of laying out the problem, and certainly you, in your positions as council members, are aware of the impact within our communities. And it is no small thing. The impact that I hear about, that our offices hear about every day, of people who are impacted by substance use disorders in their friends, their family members, their sons, their daughters, their parents, is absolutely devastating. And so the impact has its toll, not only on the member who has the disorder, but also the ripple effect is tremendous. I wanted to touch on what it actually is. I think that there is a misunderstanding of what an opiate use disorder is. And we talk about opiate use disorders. It is a brain disorder, there are, you know, it's a chronic relapsing condition in which there are actually physical changes to the brain chemistry, as well as the brain structure, that actually, once a person has the disorder, they are susceptible to relapse for life. And so it is involving long-term, chronic management. It is a difficult condition. If any of you have been smokers, or know of smokers who have tried to quit, it is incredibly difficult. And so I did want to touch on that. There are, you know, and this is a, is a disease that impacts all sectors of our community. It doesn't matter your age, it doesn't matter your race, your ethnicity, your socioeconomic status, it doesn't matter where you live. You could live in a huge house down in South County, you could live some, in a small townhouse or an apartment in Brooklyn Park, Glen Burnie, Odenton, Crofton. This really impacts all sectors of our community and the people that we serve. And so I come to you today to talk about also stigma. Because for a condition that is in and of itself incredibly dehumanizing, because it is a disorder that basically makes people crave opiate use and drug use despite negative and horrible social, physical, and psychological consequences, there's actually something that sometimes actually worsens, the dehumanizing effect of having the condition. And that is the stigma that we, as a society, place upon the condition, and the way that we treat people and families who have the condition. And I think that, in some ways, the stigma itself can do more harm than the disorder itself because it isolates not only the person with the illness, but also the families who are in need of community support and resources to help them in this time of need. Because this is a disease that, again, as Mr. Schu has indicated, has octopus tentacles into so many sectors of lives, and so it really calls for community support. So what do we do to address this issue? I believe that for us, as a Department of Health, the focus and the approach has to be very comprehensive. I don't even just talk about treatment, but we're talking about trying to provide and ensure adequate resources across the entire continuum of care. And that includes prevention. So prevention at a very early age, so not just education about drugs and, and what they are and not using them, but also about trauma, and how do we improve treatment for children who have and are undergoing trauma? Important after-care programs and such. Screening and early intervention. We need to do more to identify people who are at risk early and provide intervention. Access to treatment is no small thing. I think that it is the cornerstone to addressing the issue where we are right now. People who are at risk, who are currently experiencing the condition and the disease need treatment, and there is inadequate treatment in Anarundel County for the number of people who need treatment. And lastly, recovery support. As I mentioned early on, this is a chronic relapsing condition. There is not a cure that solves the problem for a person once they have the condition, and really, it's recovery support that helps people who are in recovery to maintain that recovery for life. And so it's all of those aspects that we, as a Department of Health, are committed to providing, to the extent that we can, and certainly, under Mr. Schu's direction and working with the State Health Department, we will do everything within our efforts and our powers to ensure that the entire continuum of care is provided. Working, of course, in partnership with key partners like the hospitals, our community organizations, other treatment providers, as well as law enforcement and the court system. So I certainly look forward to doing more work with all of these partners, as well as with each of you, and speaking with each of you individually to talk about ways that perhaps we can address specific issues within each of the sectors of Anarundel County. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Councilman. Thank you for having me tonight. I sit before you this evening in a bit of a dichotomy. For 21 years of my police career, I've hoped and prayed for a collective government effort that recognized how bad the drug problem was in this area. And a large part of my career over the years was, was dedicated to fighting the scourge that is illicit drug use, particularly in this region, opioids and heroin. So I feel blessed in that I get to sit before you as a police chief who sees that after 21 years of wishing. And I can tell you that the large majority of my cops, over the space of years, have felt alone in this fight. And for the first time ever, for many of them, we're sending the message out that they're not alone in this fight. So I thank the county executive, and I thank you for the opportunity to talk about that tonight, and your continued support. I will say that this cancer in our society is so pervasive that if I were to look around the room and ask everybody to think about it for a moment, in some way, shape, or form, their family is affected by the heroin problem, or the opioid drug abuse problem in our area. I have a brother-in-law who's a heroin addict. If you reach out far enough in any family, there's going to be somebody that everyone in this room cares about who's been directly affected by this scourge. And I think that, more than anything, is reason enough to form the partnerships that we've been forming here for the last couple months. I talked about my 21, 22-year career a few moments ago. It's the first time in my adult life that I've seen the partnership, I've seen the communication, and I've seen the commitment from all facets of government focusing together on this problem, having honest communication, holding a mirror up to themselves and saying, what can we do better? And then talking to each other about how we do that together, moving forward. I think it's magic. As the county executive said, we still have a hard fight in front of us, but I think we can have a positive impact on it. I thank you for your support, and I will join him in asking you to pass a resolution tonight, supporting our fight on this terrible evil in our society. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Any questions? Mr. Smith?
I do have a couple of questions. I certainly concur and agree with the county executive and the task force. This is just, I guess, administrative. So for my clarity, and probably the other council members, how long is the task force in place for? Is it a long-term, sort of one-year solution, two-year, or is it just, you know, a six-month process to come up with a couple of recommendations, implement those, those, those plans, and then disband the task force? Or is it a continuous, sort of vision for the county executive to keep in place?
Right now, we're in the planning stages, and the task force mission, for the moment, is to deliver a report. And it will have a lot more than a couple of recommendations. There will be probably dozens of recommendations. At that point, we will develop a plan for implementation. It may or may not involve the task force corporately, it may involve elements of the task force moving forward. We will probably be pulling in components of the private sector. For example, the hospitals need to be involved in our effort. So things will change, but I have not exactly figured out how.
The second thing I want to ask is, does, or will your future budget sort of address the importance of this academic by providing resources to help either from a, from a health standpoint or a police standpoint, obviously with additional police officers? So are you going to be able to accurately capture the economic imports of it within your budget that we can also support as well when that time comes?
Yes, the budget will reflect heroin eradication as a major priority. The work of the task force, the scope of work does not include budgeting the cost of the recommendations. So as we go into implementation phase, over the next several months, we'll be costing out each recommendation, we will be prioritizing each recommendation, we'll be establishing timelines for implementation, we will be assigning people who will be responsible for implementation.
And my last question is, as the task force is in process, is it possible for this body to receive, I don't know what's appropriate, whatever the county executive deems as appropriate, sort of periodical updates on any major initiatives that'll need to take place, either from a task force member or whoever you deem see fit, to make sure that we're sort of kept up to date on it?
Absolutely. We will be submitting the report to you so that you all will see it. I am sure that some of the recommendations will require that the council act to change county ordinance. We will probably also ask you to sit as the Board of Health to make changes in regulations and rules that'll be required as we roll out the plan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fink?
First, Chief, how are the officers doing? They got in that horrible car accident. I talked to her over the weekend, and the one still wasn't home. Is he home now?
Yes, sir. Turned it off. I apologize. So he is not, and then two of them are. He's still not home? The two that are home. He, he was not home when I checked today. Okay. The two that are home are gonna mend quickly. The third is gonna have a longer road to recovery, but he's doing well. His spirits are good. We did some laughing together the other day, which made me feel a little better because the first time I saw him, I was very concerned. So getting better, and we'll continue to give updates, and hopefully, it won't be more than nine months or even. And hopefully, it won't be more than nine months or a year or so before we get him back.
Wow, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Chan, what are we currently doing now to prevent heroin or to attack the whole heroin issue through your department?
So there's a whole host of activities that we already have going on. You know, there are, you may be familiar with some of the coalitions that we've been forming over the last few years. A lot of that has been tackling through, from a community standpoint, underage drinking. But they're also, you know, very concerned, as are all of us, about this issue impacting youth and families. And so they're also looking at ways that they can address it from a grassroots level, and we're providing some of the technical support with that. We are also going to be working with a company to try to develop more stronger prevention and education messages for parents, working with the school system in some ways on some of those messages. So we also provide strengthening families programs. This is an evidence-based program designed to, specifically for people with substance use disorders who have children, to try to, as the name implies, strengthen the relationships of the families. And it's been shown to prevent future substance use in the children. And so certainly, if you have a family history of substance abuse in your family, you are at greater risk. So there's a lot of activities. I think that there has to be more. There's a lot of resources that we need to put towards prevention. That's a really important piece. As I mentioned in my remarks as well, you know, it's not simply about just educating children and adolescents about what a drug is. It's also about how we address mental health care in adolescents, in kids, because those mental illnesses or traumatic instances that might happen when they're children might actually also increase their risk of starting use of an illicit substance when they're older. And so it really is a broad-based piece. There's a lot of other things as well that the Department of Health is doing in the other areas as it relates to treatment as well as recovery support. And so we've been slowly, over the last few years especially, trying to build those networks. You know, and I think of recovery support as a prevention piece as well, because what we're trying to do is take people who are in recovery to try to prevent them from coming back and relapsing and using again and putting themselves again at risk of an overdose. Does that help answer your?
Yeah, sure. I guess I could have been a little bit more specific. I'm interested in methadone clinics. This has been a really big issue the last 72 hours in my district. And I guess my question's more, what does your office do with methadone clinics? Are you guys, have anything to do with the licensing? Anything to do with the monitoring, inspections?
No.
Nothing at all?
No.
So it never comes to your office?
No, sir. Not at this point in time.
It's all state-regulated?
For initial licensing, yes, it is all through the state, so correct.
And then, just as a sidebar, a heroin addict in recovery or trying to get over the disease, if you will, what percentage uses methadone to get off of heroin? Is it pretty much the only way they get off of it right now, or is it a small portion?
I don't have the exact proportion. I'm not sure if that's in the literature. I'll certainly look and see if I can come back with that number for you.
Okay.
But no, there are a lot of different treatment modalities. When you talk about heroin overdose, and methadone is one of them, there's also buprenorphine. There are all the different levels of care. There's outpatient, there's intensive outpatient, where it might be three to five days a week of counseling sessions. There's also residential levels of care, such as is found in Chrisless House, Hope House, Samaritan House, and Damascus House here in this county. So there's a lot of different modalities, and it really is dependent on the acuity that a person finds themselves in at the time that they're seeking treatment, as well as, you know, what they qualify for and such, to try to match up the person and the patient with the appropriate level of care.
So not everyone hits methadone on their way out?
Correct.
Okay. And then I just, I guess for the record, just want to state that this resolution has absolutely nothing to do with methadone clinics or the clinic that's possibly opening in Pasadena. I just, I know, we had a speaker here earlier talking about it, and I just don't want the two issues getting mixed together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Fink, Mr. Proust.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. County Executive, Doctor, and Chief. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Let me just make one comment, if I will, and I want to commend you, Mr. Schu, for actually using an executive order in a way that, at least in my opinion, is the proper use of an executive order. Many of us in the Constitution field and people that care about law and order worry that executive orders are sometimes used to aggrandize power or to use resources that you don't have or extend authority that you don't. But what you've done here is to organize and galvanize the executive branch and order them to get on board and organize. So thank you, first of all, for what I consider to be, from my vantage point, an absolutely proper use of an executive order. Beyond that, I was just curious if maybe, and maybe Dr. Chan can answer this. I was curious about the demographics of people. You've mentioned that this goes everywhere and that the tentacles are everywhere, et cetera, et cetera. And my first thought about this, when I gave this some thought, was that this was a school-age problem, for the most part. But then I've learned from some sources that might not be correct. This is not maybe a school-age problem, or at least just a school-age problem. Can you just briefly comment on that?
So certainly, among the more recent fatalities that we've seen in this county, it appears to tend to be among Caucasian males, generally between the age of 25 to 34. But that certainly does impact, you know, a broad spectrum of race and ages as well. So older ages, you know, in the 50s, 60s, 70s, as well as younger ages as well, in their teens. And so it really, you know, the range really spans, you know, the whole cross-section there.
But it's older than I had, I had first thought, this is a problem in the schools, but it's much more than that.
It is, it tends to be sort of, yes, that 25 to 34-year age group, correct.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proust. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
This time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 815. If there's anyone wishing to speak on it, please come forward this time.
Good evening. Joseph Delamater, Glen Burnie, Maryland. I might just like to read something from Psalms 114. It says, "The fool has said in his heart, 'There is no God.'" I didn't hear us talk about the Lord here. I think that's where we have to go for a solution here. We've taken the Bible out of our schools, and we're wondering why we have these men that are, you know, 25 to 30? Well, it's spiritual. If we want to solve this problem, we have to bring the Bible back into our schools. If you look at the cry rate in this country, since we've taken the Bible out of our schools, it has jumped dramatically. I'm glad to see we're pulling these resources, but if we truly want to fix the problem, let's put the Lord back in the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
I'm sorry, I thought Mr. Proust, who was? Oh, okay. Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I was not planning to testify on this matter tonight because I expected a woman whose brother died from, and suffered before he died, from drug addiction. But she's not here. So I will do the best I can to tell you what she told me and has complained over the years with a lot of grief and a lot of sorrow. There are people who profit from, you know, handing out prescriptions. They know that they're making drugs available to people who are addicted to them. She was rabid about the manufacturers, and I realize that goes far beyond, you know, your purview here in the task force. But there are a lot of things way beyond, you know, the issues that I heard mentioned tonight. One, I've got this book that I've been reading called The New Jim Crow: Mass Incarceration and the Age of Colorblindness. I remain concerned that because the drug war has been predominantly been incarcerating black males for extended terms, 20, 30, 40 years of incarceration. They're 19, 20, 22. By the time they get out, they are old men, and their whole lives have gone by. So I'm very concerned about how this task force shapes, you know, who it focuses on. We know that, in fact, the prescription drug issue is, you know, upper-middle-class professional issue. And that I heard statistics on C-SPAN, but again, I wasn't going to testify, it's in the multi-millions of people who, you know, abuse these drugs. I cannot imagine the police force driving up and down and doing sweeps in upscale neighborhoods, because we know they don't. And I'm hopeful that Dr. Chan's emphasis on providing health care and treating and treatment is really important. We also know that approximately 30% of the people who are incarcerated for crime are actually mentally ill, and we have no treatment for them, just as we provide no physical treatment for other medical conditions.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Patrick Enright at 2052 Huntwood Drive in Gambles, Maryland. I'm here to encourage people, particularly the council sitting as the Board of Health, to look into non-traditional, non-common public knowledge, what I call genesis points of this kind of addiction. In particular, post-surgical art form of pain management, where opioids are legitimately prescribed to control severe pain after surgery and also for re-injury and recurrence of these sorts of things, which over long term can lead to a dependence on these prescribed opioids, abuse thereof, and then on to heroin. So my point is to encourage the task force and everybody here to look into non-traditional genesis points of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chika Nyam, 2710 Freshwater Ward, Annapolis, Maryland. The gentleman over there eloquently stated about to fix this issue, it comes down to helping people come back to church. Helping people, it's a spiritual issue, really big time. Also, we must strengthen families. When we continue to allow, you know, kids to rule the family instead of putting parents in charge of the families, then this problem will continue. So I want to encourage the task force to find ways to work with the Health Department to strengthen families. And this heroin issue also, we need to, instead of incarcerating the people that are users, we need to find out where the source is and take away, you know, make sure that those people that are the pushers are the people that go to jail instead of people that are using it. You know, we must not, we must work hard to make sure that the people that are actually manufacturing the drugs are the people that we target as, you know, to be incarcerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on Resolution 815? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 815 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 815.
Resolution expressing support for the county executive's recognition of the public health emergency presented by the use of heroin in Anarundel County.
Thank you. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 815.
Mr. Proust?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 815 has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 8114 as amended.
An ordinance concerning critical area accessory uses.
Thank you. This is a bill that we have, this is my bill that I've sponsored, it's a bill that we've worked on, worked closely with the Office of Law, and have taken input from the Critical Area Commission as well. And I believe we're at a point now where we've satisfied the Critical Area Commission's concerns. But I did want to just get on the record, if you don't mind, Mr. Swain. I did receive an email this afternoon about the bill, probably four or five hours ago, and there were some issues that were raised in that bill, and I was hoping that I forwarded that on to you and maybe just address those briefly, if you don't mind, for the rest of the council, because I know the rest of my colleagues received them.
I'd be happy to do that. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Gregory Swain, Senior Assistant County Attorney. And with me tonight is Kelly Krenitz from the Office of Planning and Zoning. She is the administrator of the County Critical Area Program. Also with me is Bernie Marzick. I've discussed with Ms. Krenitz the email that you received, and there are eight, I guess, fairly specific questions in that email. For the first one, I'd like to address that to Ms. Krenitz, which was a question about how many commercial marina waterfront restaurants and banquet halls are on IDA parcels in the county.
I don't have an exact number, unfortunately. I was already, had left the office when the email came. Before I did leave the office, however, I viewed, we have something called GeoCortex, where we can overlay properties on the county outline. There are quite a few down in Deal and Galesville and areas like that. In the other areas, the Magathie, the Severn, they're scattered. There are a handful in each one of them. Only a couple of them are really large enough that they could accommodate something like this. So it's not a number I could give you tonight, but it's certainly a number we could look into and probably provide within a couple of days.
Thank you.
And I think it's fair to say it's a fairly small number. There was also some concern about the height of accessory structures for restaurants and banquet halls that would be permitted on properties that had a marina. Now, the state law provides generally that the height limit is 18 feet, but that limit does not apply to marinas. There is, however, there are box standards for accessory uses in general, and what those standards provide is that the accessory use must be compatible.
Correct.
Must be compatible with the primary use. So it's, if the, I think the likelihood of a 40-foot-tall accessory use on a pier would be unlikely, but it does depend on what the principal structure and how that is set up. The, there's a question about grandfathering. There are existing piers are grandfathered under the bill, as well as structures on existing But some of the other questions about parking requirements, about requirements for plumbing on these structures, and how it will impact neighbors and things like that, those are all developmental issues that would be addressed during the course of a site development plan to implement one of these new accessory uses. So things like the height of the structure, the placement of the structure, parking requirements, plumbing, electrical, all those types of things are going to be addressed during the development process, either through a building permit or through a review and approval of a site development plan for the improvement. Do you want to add anything?
I think one of the things you have to keep in mind is, the state law is very specific that this has to be an accessory to the existing use that's on the property. So accessory means exactly what it sounds. It has to be smaller than, less than what's on the property. So you're not going to have a situation where, you know, you're just going to have parking in a small tiki bar on the property, and you're going to have a big, huge marina out in the water. It's going to be probably exactly the opposite. It's limited to 1,000 square feet. It's not really that big. Yes, it could be two stories possibly, but as part of that use, we're going to be looking at its impact on the airlight and view, which is part of our county code on the adjacent properties. The fire department is going to be looking at, you know, can they sprinkler it? Can they, you know, can it be handled that way? So there are a lot of factors that are going to go into how large something like this could be. Do you have room to park it? You know, just because you can put it out on a pier, you still have to be able to provide parking for it. You're still going to have to be able to get on and off of the pier. So there are a lot of factors that will limit the size of what can actually occur on these piers when these uses come in.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, any other state, Mr. Trumbauer?
So, Mr. Chan, just to put on the record, and I sent this to my colleagues, I did request a memo from the State Critical Area Commission staff. They wrote back a very brief, one-page memo, and it basically said that 8114 in its current form comported with state law and, you know, and that local jurisdictions were given the authority, you know, to enable that use on a case-by-case basis. So as the county's representative on the State Critical Area Commission, I wanted to make sure that we ran that through its due process with the state staff, and you have the memo to see that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Any additional comments or? Any additional comments or? Thank you all very much. This time, we'll open the public hearing, excuse me, on the Bill 8114. Don't believe we have the sign-up sheet here, but I don't believe that there's anyone signed up for that bill. If you'd like to come down and testify, please do so at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 8114 is closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 8614.
An ordinance concerning transfer of appropriation contingency account, Fire Department, grants, contributions, and other.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. This bill was before you at the last session, and the amendment was to remove the emergency nature of this, and the administration continues to support the bill, and I ask you to support the bill as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you all very much. This time, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 8614. There's no one signed up for this bill, but if you'd like to come down and speak on the bill, please do so at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 8614 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 115.
An emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, additional appropriation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Bill 115 was the bill that was at the work session a few weeks back, and this bill will recognize and appropriate approximately $44 million of funds to the Board of Education. The County Executive has recommended approval of these additional appropriations, and the controller certified in writing that these funds are available for appropriation. We would ask for your favorable support of Bill 115.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council? Mr. Perukka?
Thank you. Just curious, how, how much of the funds that are in play here, or being in consideration here, are in response to or directly from federal programs? Members, how much of this is directed, or is it all that way?
I'll have to defer to Alex on that, as far as the breakdown of the dollars.
Yes, sir. For the record, Alex Cheknov, Chief Operating Officer. There's two components from federal programs. There's about $2.1 million that are federal grants related to various instructional, instructional elements, and then there's an additional $2.9 million from the federal government that's associated with the healthcare program.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make a general comment. I'm not even sure that this is something that's a question, but a comment. My concern about, one of my concerns about this is that, of course, Article 1, Section 8 of the U.S. Constitution doesn't give the federal government any authority to be involved in education at all. Now, they've been involved for a long time, in many, and obviously, in many big ways. But I, but for the record, the, my concern is that, that federal programs are driving the agenda here in our local schools. And of course, they're driving the agenda, because they're driving the agenda with a lot of money, and, and that, that money, there's grants that come, come with strings attached in some way. And without, without belaboring the point or going into a lot of detail, that's, my concern is that we, we are, we're like the, the dog that's being wagged by the tail, in a sense, and that, that fundamentally, the, 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 any involvement in education is not even allowed at the federal level. And I want to just make that point for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perukka. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you all very much. This time, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 115. No one signed up to speak for this bill, but if there's someone who would like to come down, please do so at this time.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I thank you for the opportunity to testify. I have a problem, because I really don't understand what this, this bill is actually doing, except switching money around, but we don't really know what the money is and what the money is going to be doing. And, you know, the devil is in the details. Well, what are we doing with this? I see numbers like 5 million, 27 million, fixed charges, 42 million. I mean, this is not a small allocation of, of public funds. And I would really appreciate, number one, that when the Board of Education asks for these kinds of things, for these kinds, you know, when they ask for resolutions to do things with public taxpayer money, that they be much clearer, both to the board, to the, to the council, who's responsible for making sure that they're doing things right, but also making the, the information available to the public, who is paying the money. And I keep reading these things about, you know, the global situation. Yemen is falling apart, Libya is a failed state, ISIS, you know, or DASH, or whichever name you wish to apply to it. I didn't bring back my book, Gorfatwa does not apply here. These things have been going on for a long time. Algeria lost 200,000 people, people to murders during the decade of the 1990s when Bill Clinton was in office. It never made our papers. You know, there is another book called The Colder War. The Soviet Union, or, excuse me, the Russians are poised to really work, work havoc on the value of the dollar. We could be looking at our currency crashing. There's also, the Chinese and the other folks are doing currency manipulation. Right now, it's strong, because it's to their advantage. When it comes time to pay, the, the interest on the loans is going to be serious. So I'm wondering whether, if they didn't need it for job A, do they really need this money for job B?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 115? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 115 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 215.
An ordinance concerning stormwater management, watershed protection, and restoration program.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski?
I just want to state that the last work session the council had, there were some questions raised to clarify the legal means, but the intent of the bill has continued to go forward, and I'm just happy to, to make sure that it gets heard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Mr. Marzick?
Administration continues to support Bill 215. We have staff from Public Works here to answer any technical questions the council may have.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I was going to submit a, or am going to submit a amendment to this bill, and I wasn't sure if you all had seen it yet, and if you can give any comments on that particular amendment.
We'll take, we'll take comments when we have the amendment introduced. Any questions?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Ms. Chair. For, for the benefit of those in, in the audience, or in the public that weren't at the work session like we were, I wondered if either the sponsor, or perhaps Mr. Michelson, would give a brief summary of what the bill does.
Mr. Michelson?
Sure. Eric Michelson, Administrator of the Watership Protection Restoration Program. Essentially, the bill is intended to capture those residential properties that are primarily the sole residential property for individuals whose homes are in commercial zones or other kinds of zones that are non-residential, and to treat those properties essentially as a tier-two residential property, would be treated in terms of the stormwater fee.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll just say, Mr. Pruski's predecessor was, was interested in this issue too, and had brought it to a number of our attention, so I would say this is certainly ripe for discussion, and this, to me, you know, appears to be a specific fix for a specific situation, so, thanks.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you all very much. This time, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 215. We have two people signed up, Sarah Shoemaker and Laura Scalise. Since we only have two, if there's other individuals who'd like to speak on Bill 215, you can please come forward at this time. We have six seats and a podium down here waiting. Good evening. Ms. Shoemaker, when you're ready, please state your name and address on the record, and keep your remarks to two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the county council. My name is Sarah Shoemaker, and I live at 453 North Patuxent Road in Odenton. My residence happens to be in Odenton Town Center that has been designated as the historic district. I'm here in support of Bill 2-15, and also to express my appreciation to Mr. Pruski for his assistance in resolving our stormwater remediation fee fund. When changes were made to our area from general residential to residential mix by the 2009 master plan for Odenton Town Center, little did we realize what would occur over the years. Then along came Bill 2-13, that effectively made all of our residential properties non-residential. That resulted in our fees being charged as on the commercial rate, rather than the residential rate. I personally had a double fee compared to my neighbor across the street. It's taken about two years to get this, and we thank you for bringing this to the attention, and hopefully, you will resolve the particular problems that we've had.
Thank you, Ms. Shoemaker. Ms. Scalise, when you're ready?
Thank you, Councilman. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm going to, oh, am I? Oh, okay. I'm here to also support Sally's position and my own position. My property was also affected by, by being, by being assessed as commercial with regard to the stormwater bill. You know, we're, we are residents in the historic district in Block 20, which is predominantly residential homes of the historic district, and we ended up in the town center, which then had changed us to a commercial status on which we have been, have been taxed. We feel unfairly. So we are, you know, I want to thank Mr. Pruski. Thank you so much for listening and coming up with this solution to, to our issue, and I just want to encourage you to vote in favor of the bill.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I know you have labored long and hard on protecting Chesapeake Bay and the issues of stormwater management. However, I've had some, you know, some related but tangential thoughts that do bear upon it. They're talking these days in great concern about the issues of global warming, and they talk about 2030 as being a date where the, we're trying to prevent getting, raising the, the temperature of the planet by two degrees. Two degrees doesn't sound like much, but it takes very little to completely melt the polar ice caps and the glaciers, you know, the glaciers. And what that does is it throws us back to the permanent shoreline of the last, I think it's the last Permian, which ran from New York, Boston, Philadelphia, New York, and Richmond. That means we're underwater. Now, 2030 sounds like a long time away, but if a child is in kindergarten now, in 15 years, you know, he's not, he's just going to be pushing 20. So it's not that far away to be looking at, what are these larger issues? Because where is the, you know, the critical area going to be if you raise the sea level? And there are people literally worrying about, where do we put in bulkhead seawalls? What do we do to pump the water away from the various and sundry historic districts? Last week, I was talking to people about their concern about the wall in Washington. You know, how do you protect those historic monuments and stuff? There are people out there who are really worried about what's going to happen to their home, their business, and to their land, and there are people who are concerned about being refugees from this rising seawater. So where, you know, have you included any of that in your discussions of, you know, protect, you know, stormwater management?
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 215?
Yes, sir. I wasn't going to do this, but I decided I am. We have other women up here, oh, I'm sorry, Ann Wayne, 116 Oak Spring Drive, Glenburn, Maryland. We've had other women up here talking about their fees. Well, I have a question to ask, and I can't seem to get the answer. What has been the revenue of this so-called rain tax? How much money have we taken in for that object? And second of all, the people that I want to ask the questions to, DPW, Chris Phipps, or Mr. John Hammond, maybe they can give me the answer to that question. How much revenue have we taken in on account of the rain tax? Thank you. Oh, Mr. Trumbauer. It would be a good photo op if you could go down to the dock in Annapolis, where the boats come in, to dock, to moor. I don't have a boat. I don't want one. There's such an oil slick down there. We had guests at our house last night to say, they used to go down there to walk around. It's such an oil slick created by boats that moored there. Maybe that would be a good photo op, or different people cleaning it up. I don't know if that's your area, but it's in Annapolis. Is that your area, sir? Okay, well, that, to me, is an issue, and it's a problem to the bay. So who's going to clean that up? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Wayne, if you would send me an e, right here, if you'd send me an email, I'll be glad to get you the numbers, although we've collected on that fund.
I would like to know. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Happy to do it.
Thank you, sir.
Be good information for me to have as well.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Anyone else wishing to speak on 215? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 215 is now closed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 17-14 as amended.
An ordinance concerning public works, roads, obstructions.
Okay, should have the administration coming down. Hello, Ms. Kenny, Ms. Romans?
Good evening. So we testified at the last hearing, and I believe the bill was amended, so we're happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions from my colleagues? Everybody's happy tonight. Okay. Silence is golden, once again. Thank you very much. We're going to open up public hearing on 17-14 as amended. Everybody wants to come down and speak on it? Seeing no, seeing no movement in the crowd, then I guess we're going to close the public hearing on 17-14 as amended. All right, public hearing on Bill now 1714 as amended is now closed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 115.
Resolution approving the application to the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention for a Grant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. I have Corporal Linda Bowen from the Police Department here as well with me. This resolution approves the Police Department's application for a grant from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention under the Children's Justice Act. The grant will provide, will provide support for a training opportunity for detectives from the Major Crime Section. These child abuse detectives will attend an international conference on child and family maltreatment. The grant award is for $3,622. We ask for your support of this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you all very much. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 115. You wish to speak on Resolution 115, please come forward at this time.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I certainly am strongly opposed to victimizing children. Therefore, I strongly support any, anything that will tend to help protect our children. But my concern is the clarity and the transparency of the resolution. Who's going, where are they going? What are they going to learn? Who's teaching it? To whom will these services be provided, and so on and so forth?
To whom will these services be provided and so on and so forth? We certainly had this influx of illegal immigrant children coming up from Guatemala. We were told that they were severely traumatized by, you know, abuse, rape, and all kinds of other terrible things. Are these funds to be allocated to the children who have come to Maryland from, you know, from that group of kids? Or are we looking at children who are local residents who have been victimized by absolutely the most cruel, vicious, horrible forms of criminals? I don't know, but I wish that the resolution would be clearer. And Mr. Walker, since you introduced it, although it was requested by the council, or by the county executive, Mr. Schu, do you have any additional knowledge or can you clarify this?
It's just a public testimony. If you have questions, you can send them to me in an email that I have to get forwarded to the County Executive's Office. It's their bill.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else wishing to speak on Resolution 115? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 115 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 215.
Resolution approving the application to the United States Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs National Institute of Justice for a Grant.
Thank you. Ms. Marzick, when you're ready?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Resolution 215 approves the Police Department's application to the Department of Justice National Institute of Justice for funding under solving cold cases with a DNA grant program within the county. This is a grant of $143,539. It's a two-year grant expiring in September of 2016 and requires no match from the county. This funding will allow a team from the Police Department to examine the 57 cold case homicides within the county. We ask for your support of this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you all. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 215. Anyone wishing to speak on 215, please come forward at this time.
Julia Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, by and large, I, you know, support this kind of resolution. Again, I'm lacking clarity, but I am hoping that what this is intended to do is to, you know, to have the rape kits analyzed in order to identify potential offenders or, you know, connect the DNA to the offenders. We know that in the Innocence Projects in all 50 states, they have found many, many people who have been convicted of absolutely horrible crimes. They've been incarcerated for 10, 15, 20, 30 years, only to turn out that they were innocent. And in one case, the one that went to the Supreme Court, the defendant was Thompson. He'd been incarcerated on death row for 14 years, incarcerated for a total of 18 years, and he was days from execution. And, oh, I take that back. Conick versus Thompson was, that's the story, except that the DNA didn't do it for him. John Grisham has a book called The Innocent Man, and actually, there are a number of these people who have been convicted and incarcerated for prolonged periods. So, you certainly want to relieve the agony and the terrible, terrible consequences of wrongful convictions. Certainly, you want to relieve, you know, you want to prevent wrongful executions, you know, from wrongfully convicted people. You also want to give closure and protection to the families of the victims. And if the victims were survivors, you want to protect, you know, give them closure too. So, it's an important concept, but I just wish there were more details and greater clarity for the public. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on Resolution 415? I'm sorry, 215. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 215 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 415.
Resolution approving the application to the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene Prevention and Health Promotion Administration for a grant under the Maryland Cancer Fund Cancer Prevention and Grants Program.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick, when you're ready?
Mr. Chair, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. The purpose of Resolution 415 is to approve the Department of Health's application for a $19,265 grant from the State of Maryland's Cancer Fund to address human papillomavirus prevention. The funds from this grant will be used for educational materials and as well as purchasing roughly 100 doses of the vaccine for HPV. I have Dr. Chan from the Health Department with me to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. Perutka?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you just explain what the vaccine is for?
So, it is for human papillomavirus. So, that is a virus that has been shown to cause a number of different cancers. So, that is including laryngeal, cervical, anal, and penile cancers, for example. And so, this is an effort to educate people about what the vaccine is and its cancer prevention.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Thank you. Thank you both.
This is the resolution that I mistakenly talked about last time.
No worries. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 415. Anyone wishing to speak on 415, please come forward at this time. Take your name and address for the record. Let me hear your remarks in two minutes. You shouldn't have to say that. You're a relative expert at that, aren't you, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair.
You're an expert.
Of what?
Never mind. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, before, I was simply gonna say to Ms. Johnson that I hope to see her name on a ballot here in the future because she does have a wealth of knowledge about everything. So, in 2018, we look forward to seeing you campaign for some political office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, but no, I frankly, I decline the invitation.
She is a resident District 6, I believe. Isn't that correct?
You come move to my district, you need somebody outspoken up in my neck of the woods when I-
Rather than someone mild and soft-spoken and, you know, and restrained. Intimidated by, you know, just a mere glance. Okay, well, I just thought I would add, you know, I chime in about the human papillomavirus because Doggone It C-SPAN had a program. And I learned something I didn't know. There was great brouhaha, but this was the thing that you were gonna prevent HIV and AIDS and therefore, you know, you were talking about people who were sexually irresponsible and active and promiscuous and totally lacking morals and all these other things. Well, I found out that's not true. And I found out something else that's really important. Certain things have to happen at certain times or the windows or doors close. When you administer a vaccine, the body has to have the appropriate biochemical receptors. And those receptors become, for the human papillomavirus, which does cause all these other cancers as well, head and neck and throat cancers, you have to have the receptors. Those become active at age nine. If you wait past 11 or 13, those receptors sort of say, "I don't feel like receiving today. I don't want to become immune." And so, the vaccine doesn't work. Now, I'm not telling you that it's an absolute, you know, drop dead, close that window and it will, you know, it doesn't work for anybody, but there is this rather limited opportunity. And this is $20,000, I think, if I'm looking at the right one. I thought this would be part of the CHIPS program for low-income people, children, health insurance program, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, and a couple of other things as well. And then, of course, with the Obama Healthcare or the Affordable Care Act, I would have thought that this, because this is a preventive vaccine and I would have thought it would have been covered under there. And I would ask you to check to see whether there are alternative sources of funds, but it's certainly an important thing to do.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on 415? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on 415 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 8114 as amended.
An ordinance concerning zoning, critical area accessory uses.
Thank you. Any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 8114 as amended.
Mr. Perutka?
Yes.
Mr. Trembauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 8114 as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 8614.
An ordinance concerning transfer of appropriation contingency account, Fire Department.
Thank you. Any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 8614.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trembauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 8614 as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1-15.
An emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education Additional Appropriation.
Thank you. Any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 115.
Mr. Perutka?
Yes.
Mr. Trembauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one abstention. Bill 115 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 215.
An ordinance concerning stormwater management, watershed protection, and restoration program.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
This amendment removes the changes to the definitions for non-residential property and residential property Tier 2 and instead adds a fee provision, making the fee the lesser of the fee for residential property Tier 2 or the fee calculated in accordance with subsection D of the Stormwater Fee Section for Property in a Non-Residential District that is improved by an attached dwelling or detached single-family dwelling used solely as the primary residence of the property owner.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. Mr. Marzick, would you please come down? Mr. Smith, I notice it's your amendment. Do you care to offer remarks?
Yes, I think, yes, Ms. Chairman, thank you. I know when we discussed this over the last, I would say, month or so, one of the things that came up during the discussion was that we were in the process of actually changing the allocation or the classification of residences that potentially could affect them where they actually incur a fee or a higher fee for their potential property. And I think this resolution was aimed at if they are currently being cited at a fee, particular fee, that when we change this status, it doesn't raise that fee at a minimum. It reduces it to the lesser fee when they change over if they are reduced to a lesser fee. If it goes up, it still keeps them at the lesser fee. And so, that was the aim, that ensured that we didn't actually have a secondary effect of hurting individuals by trying to fix the classification of the properties located within this Odenton residential area.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
We support the amendment.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trembauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is passed.
Thank you. Bill Number 215 as amended will be heard on February 17, 2015. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 115.
Resolution approving the application to the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention for a Grant.
Thank you. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 115.
Mr. Perutka?
Nay.
Mr. Trembauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution 115 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call, I'm sorry, read the title of Resolution 215.
Resolution approving the application to the United States Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs National Institute of Justice for a Grant.
Thank you. Any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 215.
Mr. Perutka?
Nay.
Mr. Trembauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution 215 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 415.
Resolution approving the application to the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene Prevention and Health Promotion Administration for a Grant.
Thank you. Any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 415.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trembauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grosso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 415 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 615.
Resolution encouraging the Anarundale County Board of Education and Superintendent of Anarundale County Public Schools to establish safe and healthy school hours for all students.
Thank you. We have an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
This amendment adds the purchase of bus routing software in 2015 to the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Smith? I'm sorry.
Yes, this was my amendment.
I need a motion to adopt first, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
So moved.
So, a second? You can second. Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, I introduced this resolution because I know Mr. Trembauer introduced the resolution that simply sort of take, to encourage the Board of Education to sort of follow the recommendations of the task force. One of the problems that I saw with the task force recommendation was it wasn't really explicit. It just kind of gave some specific, general ideas, but didn't really sort of nail down exactly what it required them to do as a Board of Education. And I thought, certainly as a military guy, I'm always like, well, give me details. Tell me exactly what you want. That way, we can go forth. So, this amendment was aimed at specifically saying, you know, purchase of software this year, because I certainly believe that there were cost-saving measures, because one of the things I wanted to address with one of the members or community members that came up earlier, is this wasn't something that I was certainly looking at trying to do with additional money, that I believed that the school board currently within its current budget had the resources to actually procure this software to actually run the scenario. And another member had asked, or another community member had asked, you know, why do you need the software? Why can't you just use the pen and paper? Unfortunately, I think technology certainly has advantages and so, we have such a dynamic system that without the automation process of the software and the analyst who analyzes it, it makes it much more challenging to present to us or the school board, for example, a plethora of different options that I think would be available. And also, with the software, you can put in parameters or different items where you can dictate what type of outcome you want to produce. So, it gives you a much more in-depth knowledge when it comes to costs. And so, I felt like, how can we as a body vote on measures and we don't know what the true cost of it is without actually having the program that gives us the ability to have that data? Data is very important. So, why does it cost that much? Because what you're paying for is the software, the license, and more than likely, an analyst